Welcome you all to Commissioners Court. We appreciate you being here with us today. Before we get started, we have Brother Brent Williams with us to lead us in our invocation. And Commissioner McCam, let's pray.
Father, we just thank you for this day. We just praise you for everything you give us. But we do want your will to be done here at the court today. And the only place explicitly stated in the Bible that your will is, is that we are to rejoice always, pray without ceasing, and in everything give thanks, for this is God's will for us in Christ Jesus. There is one other place that says, "I beg you therefore brethren, by the mercies of God, that you present your body as a living sacrifice, holy and acceptable in God, which is your reasonable worship or service, and do not be conformed to this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind, that you may be able to prove what is that good and perfect and acceptable will of God." And so I just pray that your will will be done at the court today, that we will glorify you in all of our conduct, in Jesus' name. I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Brother Williams, thank you again. A reminder to everyone, please be sure your phones are silenced. It is 9:02. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting to order. Are there any citizens' comments? Okay. We have one, Mr. Randy Robertson, and wishes to speak on the concerning item six. And we'll speak during that time. Item number one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners Court held on August 13, 2024. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments?
Hearing non-judged, I move we approve the minutes from the regular session Commissioners Court, dated August 13, 2024, as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tulley and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the minutes of August 13, 2024, as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor, passes unanimously. Item number two is consider and take action on the request for refund of overpayment of taxes from the Henderson County Tax Assessor Collector.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have three refund checks for court approval totaling $18,368.48.
Court, questions? Hearing non-entertained motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the overpayment of taxes as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner McCam to approve the request for refund of the overpayment of taxes from Henderson County Tax Assessor Collector as presented. All those in favor of the motion, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number three is consider and take action on a possible burn ban for Henderson County. This morning, we have our fire marshal with us.
Good morning, Court. I requested this last week with anticipation that we would be over the 575 threshold. As of yesterday, we were at 579 as an average in the county. They have not updated as of today, but we have been increasing anywhere from 10 to 17 points a day. So I expect that number to be higher probably before court ends today. In the last couple of weeks, we've had 20 grass fires that were notable, that took at least a couple departments to go to and put out. We've had a couple that were, I wouldn't say real big, but we had one that was close to 20 acres. It's probably the largest one we've had. The problem right now is, is that the 10-hour and 100-hour fuel load in the woods is pretty bad. And the percentile is getting higher and higher. So it's causing these fires, once they do get in the woods, to burn longer and hotter. And it's causing a problem for our fire departments, specifically on the west side of the county. We're a little bit better on the east side. It's 484, I think, is the lowest we have in the county. As far as the fire departments and fire chiefs, I spoke to several of them. Depending on where they're at, the west side guys say, yes, we need it. District 8 Fire Chief, I spoke to him this morning. He's, you know, kind of central. He says we need it. I spoke to the Chandler Fire Department Chief also this morning, and he said, "Man, my yard is green." So, you know, I can do either way.
Questions, comments?
I've always had in the back of my mind 600 when we start looking at it. So we're, this report, it looks like yesterday, just 591 on the average.
Did they just update it?
I don't know. I'm just looking at what the hyperlink was on our deal.
Okay. Well, they probably just, so it's 591 now. So, yeah. So it jumped, what, 12 points since yesterday?
Since Friday, it's jumped 12 to 15 points a day.
Yes. It's gonna be. And 575 is what they recommend when we start, you know, considering putting it on. So, yes, it's...
The weather I've watched during the day, it's triple digits all the way through court next week. For a week.
Correct.
So we could be at 550 to 560.
650 or better, probably.
Yeah.
Easily. And I don't see any rain in the forecast with the exception of, I think, I saw maybe next Wednesday, they got like a 30% chance in there. But I don't know that I really trust the forecast that far out.
If we was to go with a burn ban, our permit, we have a TCEQ on our burn piles. Is that gonna keep us from burning that before September the 8th?
I believe...
That's when our permit runs out.
I believe what we would have to do is contact TCEQ and make sure that they're okay with us continuing to burn, because we're burning for agricultural purposes when it comes to those burn piles for the emergency debris removal. That's my opinion of it. Whether or not that'd be their opinion, I'm not sure.
But if it had to, we could probably get our, extend our permit maybe for a later date when we take the burn ban off. I still have one more burn in my precinct that I need to do from the debris pile.
I definitely, you know, if we want to extend those, I definitely will fill out the paperwork and get with TCEQ on that. I don't know if the burn ban will affect it or not. There, I mean, I don't know if it'd affect their decision or not.
Well, in that, we received the notification of Texas pile that is up, what, north of...
Markerson.
Markerson, as well. So it's not, it won't just be affecting us, it'll be affecting others as well. And it will rely on TCEQ's judgment for that.
Right. You know, I think typically what we have during these times is not the safe, controlled fires that are the issue. Whether there's a burn ban or not, if you're safely going to burn and control your fire, you're gonna be there with it and have a water source. We're trying to get those people that just aren't thinking about it and that would go out there and set their brush pile on fire. That's the ones we're trying to keep from, you know, starting a fire at this time. Hoping they see a sign, or they see it in the paper, or on one of the fire department signs or something, and it just clicks in their mind, well, maybe I should wait. Because we get calls, I don't know if y'all are getting calls, but we get calls every day now. "Hey, is it okay for me to burn? Are we under a burn ban?" They, if we say, "No, we're not under a burn ban," they think it's okay to burn. And it's simply too dry right now. It really is.
Well, I think we've been pretty consistent over the last few years, I know, of when it gets around that 600 doing a burn ban. And just like he said, he get calls so people know it's coming.
Any further discussion?
I think that we've always put it, or put it on there, and then waited and did it the next week. But we're in a point right now that we could be definitely bad if we wait another week to put this burn ban on.
And you're correct. We've done that in the past to try to let people kind of know, hey, it's coming. The danger with that is, is it tells everybody, "I better burn everything I have."
That's what I know. Burn, baby, burn.
Yeah. And...
Well, we do have a pretty good track record of within a week or so, a higher percentage of it raining. Right now, it doesn't say we will, but it seems like most of the time, we'll end up getting rain.
Well, that's what I'm saying is, as soon as it goes on the deal, is three days, we're gonna get a good rain.
Yeah. Let's hope so. Because grass is green right now, but that doesn't mean anything.
No, it doesn't.
If this kind of year, this heat, this dryness, green or not, it'll burn.
I mean, the three-day forecast for the 100-hour fuel load puts us in the high percentile. And that's for, you know, branches that are up to three inches in diameter. So grass being green isn't gonna stop it. They're saying three-inch diameter, trees are burned now.
All that rain and cold weather we had at the first part of this summer sure did help contribute to the fuel load we had in there.
Well, and you can see on the interactive map, we're, we're hot orange and they're, they're yellow where how much rain that the east side got.
Which is usually the case, because our county is so wide. We get a situation where we have two distinct different areas of threat. And it shows up that way on that particular map. So west end stays drier than the east end.
The west end right now is at a 655.
How long do you recommend we put the burn ban off while we do that?
You know, in the past, we've done 14 days. And then I think last year, we just did 30 days, or actually 28 days, because it falls on court. With in mind that if we do get a bunch of rain, the judge can remove the burn ban without coming back to the court. So in my opinion, 28 days is fine, because if we need to, we can always remove it then. And then the court doesn't have to go through this process every couple of weeks. But it's completely up to the court.
Normally, by the first of September, it usually starts trying to cool off on the downfall or cooling off anyway, and hopefully we get some rain. Kind of like y'all, if you don't put it on today and they know it's coming, then you say, everybody goes to burning their stuff all at one time. It overwhelms our departments.
Anything further, Court? Not entertain a motion.
Judge, I make a motion that we put a burn ban in for 14 days for Henderson County.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to impose a 14-day burn ban. Any further discussion? All those in favor, passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you. Item number four, consider and take action on adopting additional fees on the vehicle registration fees in Henderson County. In court, this is something we do every year. This is where we more or less ratify our bridge fee. You'll see in your backup there. It has been in place now for almost 30 years, maybe a little bit longer. And want to get the court's permission to move forward with option A, which is no changes to what has been implemented in this program. It has to be done in court so that the state understands that's part of our program. Questions? Hearing non-entertained motion on, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion with a judge's signature.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Spivey to approve option A of the imposition of optional fees for the calendar year 2025. Any further discussion? All those in favor, passes unanimously. Item number five is consider and take action on a resolution authorizing county grant to Meals on Wheels East Texas for program year 2025. Of course, this is the annual resolution that we do so that Meals on Wheels can draw down the Texas Department of Agricultural Funding to help supplement the program. This has nothing to do with our discussion with them asking for additional funds, of which we discussed during budget. This is solely for the Texas Department of Agriculture's Texans Feeding Texans for home delivery meal program. And at this point, we do this every year, passing this resolution so that opens the doorway for funding. Any questions? Hearing non-entertained motion.
I'll make that motion with a judge's authorization to sign.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, seconded by Commissioner Tulley to approve the resolution authorizing county grant to Meals on Wheels of East Texas for program year 2025 with the county judge's authorization to sign. Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion, passes unanimously. Item number six is consider and take action on a resolution for opposition to applying bio solids in Henderson County. And at this time, we have Mr. Randy Robertson, who has signed up to speak. And if you would, Mr. Robertson, please come up to the podium. And we will allow you three minutes to discuss this item with us.
Good morning, Court. I won't take three minutes. I just wanted to say, we thank you very much for putting this on the agenda. It's been a kind of a crusade we've been going on because of how dangerous this stuff is and how it's gonna impact all of our lives. And if you get to looking at all the information, you will see that. And I'm really happy that Commissioner Spivey and Commissioner Tulley came over to Van Zant County when they had that hearing. And my wife and daughter-in-law, we've had two, two community get-togethers at McLean's and, you know, and stuff like that. You will be surprised how many of your constituents are on board if you, if you check with them. And so it's getting to be a large deal. It's getting to be worse and worse across the country. So we really appreciate y'all taking the time to look at it, study it, however you looked at it, and, and think about this resolution. I think it's the proper thing to do. And I hope that, I hope the whole state of Texas sooner or later just does away with it. That's all I've got. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Court, before us, we have a resolution that is partially lengthy. It is something that Commissioner Tulley and Commissioner Spivey, as discussed previously by the speaker, has been involved in with the public hearings and on that side of the county. Commissioner, you sent forth the original proclamation that was, I believe, passed in Kaufman County concerning this issue.
Correct.
And I believe passed it on to the county attorney to be able to work that. And the court has had access to it for a couple of, at least a week. You want to tell the court about it? Say the reasoning, some of these things?
Yes. So it was, there was a TCEQ permit that was issued in Van Zant County. And I really didn't take any notion to it. And then after attending our north and east conference in Johnson County, talking about this bio solid waste and where, what it was doing to that, their county. And then digging in, when I got back, I looked at the permit again, and the permit had changed. And the permit had a red line in there that stated that this bio solids, if put on this property, would affect the Cedar Creek Lake and the Trinity River Basin. And that's when I got involved in knowing what Johnson County had went through. I am a big proponent for personal property rights, but also we got to understand that there are other people on the other side of the creek or other side of the fence that has personal properties that we need to help out and need to try to figure out how to help them. So Johnson County stated, and everything that I've read on the, on the internet and found through verbals from, from people, is there's nothing good about bio solids. It's a man-made chemical that is highly toxic, and it does not, there's no way around it. Yes, we make it and everything we flush down our commodes or our toilets are, can be there. But Johnson County having 10 cows and two horses and five stock ponds affected. And the guy was a beef cattle rancher that was gonna have to put his 150 cows down in 2022. In New Mexico, Clovis, New Mexico, a guy was going to have to, two of his dairy cows died. And when he got back home, 4,000 cows, or dairy cows had to put down. So he really got affected by his whole operation. And so I know that there was one on the far west side, over in Seven Points by the drag strip, that, that has been pulled. We have been told that this permit in Van Zant County has been pulled, but we haven't seen any documentation of TCEQ yet. But we, as commissioners, I think, need to band together for our farmers, our agriculturals, our beef cattle guys, and to have this stuff not, not delivered to Henderson County and spread out over our, our agricultural land here in Henderson County. Commissioner?
What I've learned about it is TCEQ isn't regulated by, EPA doesn't regulate them to test for the bio solids, such as PFOS and other harmful chemicals that's in, there's a certain type of bio solids. I think it's type A or is it B?
Type A, both.
They're the ones that are not required to be tested for, and that's the harmful stuff that's in it. We're just trying to help the legislators see that we care about our community and our land and our animals to do this resolution, so it'll go further to the legislators.
So I've also been in talks with, I know we have two, two state reps, but I have been in talk with my state rep, Keith Bell, and told him that if, if and when I got this resolution passed, it will be coming to his office. I've talked to Senator Nichols' office, and I've also talked to Lance Gooden's district director in Van Zant County, and his chief of staff in Washington knows it's coming. And, I mean, it's, I guess it's one of those deals where it's a, I've taken it to heart, seen what it's done, and see how it could affect the cattle, the land, the hay population. And, and that's just our food nutrition. That doesn't talk about people that are, that were north of 30, 80, 25 years ago, that had well water. And then so we're talking about groundwater, surface water, well water, drinking water, anything that popped where this stuff could get to. And the applicator has been shut down in Missouri and Alabama because of not following TECQ or the, whatever their Alabama or Missouri regulations are. Because they were supposed to have some kind of 500-foot boundary from this and 150-foot boundary from the well water and just all kinds of stuff. And that's what they got shut down for because of those four deals. So I think today is where we need to take a stance at Henderson County and say, "This stuff is not welcome here," and find someplace else to dump it. And that, I don't know what the year was, but in 1986, 1991, this bio solids was dumped into the ocean prior to that. In 86 or 91, they stopped that. I wonder why. Probably killing aquatic life. So it's not, it may be cheap fertilizer, but it, it ain't good fertilizer. So all the hay people I've talked to, they spray our fertilize 21-817. This bio solids fertilizer that they're calling it is 440. So it takes five tons of this stuff to equal what 21-817 is. And so I'm making a stance today that it's not needed in Henderson County.
I've got one question about, you know, the term that they use is bio solid. I spoke with Mr. Ed Gatlin. He works there for Amalaw, at the water treatment plant. They clean out their treatment plant, which is just a freshwater drinking water plant, but it's called bio solid. And I know you said A and B. I don't know if there's different classifications of what a bio solid is, but theirs is not a human waste treatment plant. It's just a water treatment plant to treat it with chlorine and stuff to pump out for drinking water. They had to clean their treatment tanks out every couple of years, once a year, twice a year. And they sprayed it on some land that they have over by Lake Athens. Would this affect them any at all, having tests done or anything like that, or not being from a sewer plant?
I would think, I would, well, I've been asked the question, what about a aerobic system? Well, aerobic system is just, you're supposed to be able to drink a cup of water when it sprays across your yard, but I'm not, I don't have no cup, so I'm not going out there to drink that. But people have asked me about aerobic systems. Well, aerobic systems are nothing but water and doing out there. I think it's the black sludge. And people have said, "Well, what about chicken litter?" Well, chicken litter is chicken litter. They go through the chicken houses, pick it up. They don't do nothing to it. So, I mean, you're talking about perfume. You're talking about medicine that people flush down, human waste, and that kind of stuff. And that's what's creating the PFOS when they set it out on the side. I mean, this stuff in Johnson County was smoking and, that they had in the video that I saw. And, and had white stuff. And they said, you know, "What's that white stuff? Is that chicken litter?" And they said, "No, that, that's a feminine napkin." That was, that was all that white stuff was out there. So everything that gets flushed down the toilet is making PFOS once they get the water away from it. That was, that was all that white stuff was out there. So everything that gets flushed down the toilet is making PFOS once they get the water away from it. So Commissioner, I don't know your answer, but the answer to tell you, but I would think that the water, spraying the water is fine. So we'll have to see.
Well, that'd be my same question. I want everybody to know that this resolution, we don't have any, any way to enforce anything about it.
True.
All we're doing is saying, we would like our government officials in Austin to make sure the EPA looks at these chemicals in this product. Other than that, we don't have any power over it. My question is, is about the whole resolution is the trickle-down effect, just like some of the questions we just talked about right here. I mean, if it's in the makeup, if it's in, in all of those products, nearly every product that we use has these chemicals in it. Every product that we use in the U.S. probably, in the world. Now, that's not a U.S. problem. This is a world problem. This is happening all over the world, these chemicals. But if they're getting in, if they're getting into this bio solid, and it's from the makeup and the other products that we use and put, and it ends up in the toilet through our body or through our napkins or whatever it is, why isn't that same product coming out in that aerobic system? That everybody in that the country's got now? And when it rains, that aerobic system, everything that it sprayed out drains into the creek. I mean, I don't understand that. I don't understand. We can say it does come from here, but it don't come from here. And then it's going to trickle down to, you know, just like these farmers putting chicken litter out. Well, you, you put chicken litter out in the field and it's smoking when you put it out, just like this bio sludge is smoking. That's an effect of, of having a, a moist product piled into a heap. And it's going to develop its own heat. And, you know, what, what are we going to do? And I'm not against the resolution, but I want everybody to know that we don't have any regulatory authority over it. What are we going to do? These are our questions need to be asked because I, I hadn't had anybody call me and ask me about this. I don't know if I've had anybody in my area that's put it out on their pastures. I do know we have a lot of chicken litter put out on pasture. What about these dairy farmers and stuff that are putting their sludge out on pasture? What about these treatment plants, whichever town we've got in Henderson County, and I guess all over the state, I'm sure? What are they going to do with this stuff? We've got 380 million folks in the United States, or between 320 and 380, using the bathroom every day. What are we going to do with this stuff? So I don't know. I mean, I think those questions need to be asked. It's not going away. I think this resolution will make it where our, our senators and our representatives will just push the EPA to test some of this stuff and see how many PF, how many chemicals are in it. But I don't know, you know, what good it does. Sometimes we resolve to resolve. But there's a lot more questions than there are answers, I think, about this stuff.
And then they may come in and say, yeah, we'll approve that, but the county needs to hire five people, put in a lab and do their own testing and stuff. It's on y'all. I mean, that could happen too. But, you know, I, I think it needs to be regulated. And, and I think the main thing is if they, they come out and they spread it on a pasture and the levels are below the minimum what they're supposed to be. But what we don't, really don't want to see is they come in once a week and put it on the same place over and over and over where you're just diluting the ground so bad with it. You know, if it's spread out over a big area, you know, in, in places, but nobody wants it. So they find one person that'll take it and they just keep dumping and dumping and dumping. I know I was told up around Sulphur Springs area or Mount Pleasant area where Pilgrim's Fried Chicken was, that used to, everybody would take the chicken litter on their pastures. And then it got to a certain point where there, there are certain things that I guess may be in it too, but they, they were only allowed to put so much on it per year. They couldn't just keep putting it on there.
And that is the case here. There, there is a, a number that, out there that you can't put on there for so many years. So the other thing, Commissioner, that you were talking about is, is that is what this resolution is about. It hasn't happened over on the east end of the county. They found people, or this water place that contracted through the city of Fort Worth has found these, this one property owner that has had property on, in Precinct One and has property in Van Zant County. And that's where it was going to be at. This is about all of an education, getting it out there, tell you what it can do and what has happened when it's been spread out there. So I was told that the TECQ qualifications and regulations are all about the scientific deal. If it meets this, this, and this, pass a resolution because the EPA hadn't told TECQ of what PFOS is. You are correct about PFOS, that they say that EPA says four parts per trillion is, is legal. We do have that in our drinking water. But if it gets in, 10 parts per trillion could kill you, 3 parts per trillion could kill me if, if that's what our body makeup, body makeup is. So the Johnson County cow that, that was born stillborn, when he was tested at A and M, he had 610,000 parts per trillion. And he never took a, a drink of water from a pond and never ate a blade of grass. He got all his nutrition from his mother. So that's how toxic it is. There's no testing of PFOS. TCEQ has stated in, in the public hearing that they're waiting on regulations from EPA. And that's why, that I've already contacted Congressman Gooden's office and told them, we need some tighter restrictions from EPA at the state level. And so they're working on it. And they, hopefully, they know that this resolution is coming. So.
Well, I, I'm not against the resolution. I'm, I'm far as people getting answers. But I also want the public to know that we have no regulatory authority over this stuff.
I agree.
TCEQ and those other governmental agencies that oversee this stuff. And all we're doing is asking our representatives to look into it and try to get some answers. Because I think there are way more questions right now. Because I, I looked it up on the internet, you know, you can find anything you want on that. There's a lot of good stuff. There's a lot of things to talk about how good it is. And, and there's a lot of things that talk about how bad it is. And there's about the equal amount of both, just like about everything else that goes on around. So I think we, if nothing else, the resolution maybe get our representatives to look into it and try to push TCEQ to have a tighter rein on it.
Well, I think somebody's applied for a permit in my precinct. It'd be the first one since I've been here. I know one of the big ranches used to use it, Tyler's facility for years. They spread it on their pastures and stuff. And on one of the big ranches, but there's a new one that just came up. And it's within a half a mile of Lake Palestine where they're going to put it. And I wouldn't be so concerned about it if it was just on a rancher's property that was wanting fertilizer. But actually, the people that are doing the hauling, the distribution of it, it's on their property. So I don't know how much they're going to continue to just keep bringing in and dumping on one location all the time.
Well, I, I will find you that, that, that number of tons that you can't, that you can put on that property for so many years. It's in the EPA. I mean, the EPA states that, that bio sludge, that you can't, I think it was like crops above the ground, 14 to 20, 20 months, you can't harvest anything off of that, off that land. And anything that is below that is like 18 months, anything below ground is 18 months. And then if it's a highly traffic area where the public's going to be, you can't even have public on there for a year. So I haven't found anything positive about it. I mean, if somebody can give me that, I'd be more than happy to entertain it. But I haven't found anything that's positive about it. Everything I've seen is, is negative.
As I say, I think that's saying is, you know, the enforcement, somebody to enforce the restrictions on it, how much of it they can put out. Not that they can't put it out, but just like our herbicides, we put on to kill weeds and stuff, a lot of them are saying there are no more than one quart per acre per year.
Right.
And they got regulations on there, what the usage of it is.
And I think from everything that I've heard, that, that is the fact, that's the point that's being looked at, is that bio solids will be around until the end of time. What is of concern are those polyphora alkali substances. And I hope I said that word correctly. And, and that is what we're talking about.
Concentration level in one spot.
The impact of these substances, it's not so much the bio sludge. It's the fact that that is where these substances end up being at. And this resolution is hoping to bring focus and to bring, you know, knowledge to folks about, it's the substances that, that we're looking at. And when you look at, and we say, when bio solids or bio sludge is an easy term to grab a hold of. But it is very broad. And that's some of, some of the issue why you have not only waste treatment, wastewater treatment, but you have the septic systems and all of that. It's so broad. Which not that, that this resolution brings the point. That is the transport mechanism that brings the PFOSs, as it's called. And this is going to be fun. I should quit before I do this. Perfluoro cationic acid, which is PFOA. And then there's another one that's a sulfonic acid. It's those things that are, that come in mainly in those, it gets a higher concentration from the urban settings. Is not what was said about coming out of Tarrant County. A large contributor to that was firefighting phone, is, is what I understand. Is that correct, Commissioner?
That is correct.
And there's lots of studies of the increase of cancer with our firefighters from those areas, very specific cancers that are have been tied back to this. And I think that's a big concern of this. And Commissioner, you are exactly correct. We don't do a lot of resolutions because resolutions, it's easy to resolve anything, you know? We could resolve that the judge shaves his head like Commissioner Tulley, you know? We can do a lot of those things. There's, there's, there's no impact to it as far as regulatory impact. But it does bring focus to it. And, and that's what this resolution is here today. Commissioner Woolley and Commissioner Bailey in Johnson County are good friends of many of us sitting here. And both of them come from an agricultural background. Commissioner Woolley specifically. And he was very passionate about this due to the impact it is on his county. This one location was actually on the watershed of Richland-Chambers, which would actually send that, has a high likelihood from their discussions of sending those very chemicals back to Fort Worth, Tarrant County through their systems. So there's a lot of passion about these. And I, I think that by having this discussion here, the agricultural benefits of bio sludge is there minus these chemicals. So just to bring focus, this is not so much the bio sludge. That is the delivery mechanism. And how do you regulate the products going in? And then how do you ensure that the transport, it's no different than overweight trucks? You know, until you stop them and put them on the scales, you don't. So it's, it's encouraging the testing, the stuffing. So I think that kind of sums it up.
You know, it's, it's all coming, we're growing county and getting populated. And just like we found out on TCEQ regulating us on how to burn brush, that get permits and stuff. They're regulating that now. And it looks like they're going to start going after people that's doing it. They're starting, starting with us at the county at the top and then, but, you know, there's going to be regulations that, you know, stuff like that affects everybody.
I hope enough information comes out about if this continues. And it's going to continue to be a problem for years down the road. You don't get, these are forever chemicals you don't get rid of. But sometimes when all this stuff comes out, because we say, we, we throw the words out there, bio sludge on agriculture fields and stuff like that. So a lot of times, these urban communities and urban cities and towns and counties, they, they lay off everything on us country folks, you know? That we're spoiling the environment because we're using bio sludge on, and bio solids on our properties, you know? And just like he said, the, the biggest concentration of these chemicals is in fire retardant. Ever, ever one of our trucks, I'm, I'm sure the, the fire marshal could bet farce on this. I bet every truck, fire truck in the county's got fire retardant on it. They drive an airplane across California and Oregon and places like it, dropping it just willy-nilly, you know? It should go wherever. And then after these big storms, I mean, big fires, you always have rain. And it's a pure runoff. So I don't want the idea of getting out there that this is a rural problem. That we're causing the problem because we're putting bio sludge on our properties. I, I want people to know, and I hope this information comes out, it's a lot of it coming from the urban area when they're putting these fires out. It's not, it's not just an ag problem. Everybody wants to lay everything off on the ag problem and, and make agriculture look bad. But that's just a small part of it, the, the ag part. I mean, there, there are very few farmers putting sludge on their, on their pastures. We got lots of farmers in Henderson County, lots of acreage in Henderson County, Van Zant County, Kaufman County. And we got one or two farmers doing it. And if it's a problem, it's a problem. But I don't want the whole problem laid off in all of these terms that you don't never hear nothing but agriculture. And I, I don't want the ag folks blamed for all of this later down the road. I want the blame to go where the blame goes. If it's all, if it's in our fire retardant, we need to figure out a new fire retardant. If it's in our fields, we need to quit putting it on our fields. But I don't want every bit of it being laid off on rural folks, on our farmers and our ranchers. They get, they got enough trouble. They, they get it. All of these rules trickle down to them. Everything trickles down. It, it trickles down to us, the smaller counties. You know, most of the rules made in the legislature are made for Dallas, Fort Worth, San Antonio, Houston, Austin, and Lubbock. But they trickle down to the rest of us. And cause problems, you know, for the, the smaller counties that don't have the amount of money that those big counties have. But still have to abide by the same rules. So that's my only part of it is I, I'm, I'm all for the resolution. I'm all for our legislature getting us some answers and digging deeper into this. But I don't want it all laid off that it's just an ag problem, because it is not. Ag is a very small part of it.
Court, any further discussion concerning this? We're hearing none. We'll entertain a motion on the resolution.
Judge, I move we approve a resolution for opposition, opposition to applying bio solids in Henderson County.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to approve the resolution for opposition of applying bio solids in Henderson County. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Number seven, considering take action to set a public hearing for the 2025 county budget. Court? Court, we've been in here for several weeks now, working on budget. And now, we got again to put an ending point. What we're looking at here is that as we continue on the next couple of weeks, we're looking at September the 10th as being the day to not only set our, to have the public hearing for the budget, but also on the tax rate and to wind up the budget process for this year. September 3rd is not available to us due to conflicting schedules and the holiday. And of course, the 27th is too soon. So, the 10th is the best day for us. We set these close together, you know, when we do this, the tax rate and the others, we start at 9:05 and then set the next one at 9:07, moving down that line so that no matter how long it takes, we met the posting date. If it takes one minute or 30 minutes, we met the posting day of the posting time for all of those. Be happy to answer any questions or is there any discussion? Again, this is just for setting of the proposed budget. If there's no discussion, we have a motion for September the 10th at 9:05.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spady and second by Commissioner Richardson to set a public hearing for the 2025 county budget for September the 10th at 9:05 a.m. Any further comments? All those in favor, passes unanimously. Next one is item eight, which is consider and take action to set a, set proposed 2024 tax rate for the 2025 county budget. And I know that that sounds a bit confusing, but to be specifically correct, the tax rate on the 2024 is what is used to fund the 2025 budget. And that is why we work it in this fashion. So, any discussion about this proposed rate? I know that it is, when we set a proposed rate, we can go down, but we cannot go above once we finish our process. And of course, this would be in, for September the 10th at 9:05 when we get to the public hearing. But first, we have to propose the rate. Comments, Court? Our current rate is .331392. That is the cumulative rate of the general, road and bridge, and farm to market and flood We have continued to pull through. The voter approval rate this year is .312379. It's a decrease of .019013. That is the highest setting that we can work with today. One thing that we are seeing is a trend in our estimated collections. Court will understand this from last year. It kind of began last year when we were seeing our collections estimates kind of wobble a little bit over the last couple of years, to be honest. So, we're proposing cutting that back to 22, excuse me, a 92% collection rate. So, questions, comments?
I'd like to say thank you to everybody that had anything to do with getting this budget ready. We had a lot of, a lot of individuals that put a lot of work into it. So, I want to thank everybody.
One thing that's changed over the years, if you care, is the forms that we have the calculations that we have to, how many pages is in that calculation in the tax collector does for us? Looks about like an IRS form now that is. Yeah. Where you work your way all the way down, exemption this, exemption that. It used to be very short and concise. And it's, it is, it's like an IRS tax form now. Well, Court? I'd like to follow question. The proposed rate that we have built the budget on is .312379. And yes, we're still, we'll still continue to work on the budget between now and then. But having it set at this rate will allow us the maximum capabilities, because as I said, we can't go over it, we can go below it. But at this time, this is proposed and yet has our cap.
Just, I'll make the motion to set the 25 rate at the voter approval rate level of
I'll second the motion. He said the 25.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson to set a proposed tax rate at .312379. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, sir. Commissioner, can you modify that to the 24 tax rate? Or tax, 24 tax rate, yeah. He said 25.
For the 25 budget.
Yeah. Set the 24 tax rate for the 25 budget. I believe that was the intent of your motion.
Yes, but if I need to state that, that same, set the 24 tax rate for the 25 budget.
Can you second that, Commissioner?
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Yes.
All right, then. To restate the motion, Commissioner, a motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson to set the proposed tax rate at .312379 for the 2025 county budget. Any further discussion? All those in favor, passes unanimously. Thank you, Court. Now, we got one more in our housekeeping, which is number nine, consider and take action to set a public hearing for the proposed 24, 2024 tax rate for Henderson County. And this, as we discussed earlier, we usually set two minutes following our deal and would entertain a 9:07 setting for September 10th if the Court is willing.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Tooley to set a public hearing for the proposed 2024 tax rate for Henderson County for September the 10th at 9:07 a.m. Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion, passes unanimously. All right, item 10 is receive financial reports, of which we have none. Item 11 is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets. Mr. Bynum?
Yes, I do have the payroll distribution totals for biweekly number 17. I need to get Court approval from Commissioner McCam, please.
Questions on biweekly 17? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the payroll disbursements for biweekly 17 as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spady and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the payroll dispersment totals for biweekly 17 as presented. All those in favor of the motion, passes unanimously.
And yes, I also have the accounts cash sheets for the July 24.
Court, any questions concerning the accounts cash sheet for July 2024? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tooley and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the accounts cash sheet for period ending July of 2024 as presented. All those in favor of the motion, passes unanimously. Thank you, Court. Item 12, consider and take action on submitted contracts, which we have none today. Item 13 is consider and take action on request for right of way permits. Commissioner?
Yes, East Cedar Creek has a proposed July line activity at 136 low with a road board for a new sewer tap.
Are they both East Cedar Creek?
Yes, they are. So, the next one is East Cedar Creek for a two inch sewer main. This was an emergency deal back in July and somehow, it got lost in my emails. And so, we're just bringing it for, to the court, because this is the action that was done in our roads. So, we have some resources to go back on.
Questions for the Commissioner? If not, entertain a motion.
Judge, I'd like to approve the right of way activity for East Cedar Creek at 136 low for a sewer tap four and at 113 Camelot for a sewer tap.
Authorization?
With Commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tooley and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the right of way agreements with East Cedar Creek Freshwater Supply District for, for work at 136 Low Drive for Road Board and...
113.
113 Camelot for repair to a two inch sewer main with Commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor, passes unanimously. Item 14, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments, which we have none. Item 15 is consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, sir, we have listed here 2024, excuse me, $287,440 and 47 cents.
Commissioner Spady, questions?
I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tooley?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
No questions.
Commissioner Richardson?
No question, Judge.
Entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 bills in the amount of $287,440 and 47 cents as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spady to approve the bills in the amount of $287,440 and 47 cents as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, passes unanimously. Item 16 is consider and take action on submitted plats.
We have one plat in Precinct Four and all pieces paid.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, Court, this plat is called the Martinez Edition. It consists of three lots. It's along County Road 4336. Lots will be from 1.17 to 1.14 acres. They've got all their letters for power and water. Historical's been done. We had this on the agenda for last week and there were a few errors on the plat that we had to have corrected to bring it back to court today. We've, they put in their utility easement and they had a locator map that was wrong and there was some wording that was wrong in the notes on easements and stuff. And we've had that corrected. And on the plat, the actual plat here, Danny Wilson has signed it. It's not signed in the backup, but it has been signed by Danny Wilson for the onsite sewer.
Questions for the Commander? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the final plat for the Martinez Edition in Precinct Four for filing purposes only.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spady to approve the Martinez Edition for filing purposes only. Any further discussion? All those in favor, passes unanimously. Item 17 is open and consider bids, which we have none. And then, item 18 is consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tooley and second by Commissioner McCam to adjourn at 10:02. All those in favor of the motion, passes unanimously. Thank you.